Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting back to order and I'll ask the city clerk for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon?
Here.
Mr. Kleindt?
Here. If you'll all please rise for the flag salute. Please realize that we have just seen on television from our studios that apparently some military action has occurred tonight in Baghdad. We're not sure what has occurred, but apparently some activity has started with some anti-aircraft, so as you give your pledge, it may have a different meaning. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, our invocation is by Reverend David Pelletier from the Metropolitan Community Church. Good evening, sir, thank you for coming down tonight.
I'd like to invite us all to recognize our own understandings of the divine and of who God is as we begin this invocation. God of our various understandings, we come to you tonight. Nation is at a critical time, the world is at a critical time, and some of us are afraid and others are confused, but we pray that your peace would touch each of our hearts, that you would keep our minds open to your spirit, and that you would continue to bless our city during these times of international crisis. You would protect us and guide us and direct us, our leaders here at home and our world Help us to see the commonality of all of humanity and to honor the dignity of each and every Bless these council proceedings and bless all the people who have gathered here to participate in government, for it is in your many names that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, David. We had scheduled a presentation by the Ontario Mayor, but apparently it has been postponed just due to council, his council's conflicts, so we'll reschedule that for a future meeting. I'll now turn to our city attorney, Mr. Bill Winder, for a report on issues discussed in closed session. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, of the items printed in today's closed session agenda, the council actually considered the following items. Agenda item number one, real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 involving the redevelopment agency of the city of Palm Springs and property located at 128 South Palm Canyon Drive involving the Plaza Theater. There was discussion of price and terms in connection with these negotiations and a status report on these ongoing negotiations. In addition, the city of Palm Springs considered agenda item numbers one and two on its agenda, again, both real property negotiations authorized pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 involving property with the Desert Water Agency at the southwest corner of Vallejo Road and Mesquite Avenue. Again, there was a discussion of the status of ongoing negotiations regarding the acquisition of this property, and there was an approximate, there was a discussion regarding negotiations involving approximately 4.67 acres located on the south side of Vallejo Road east of Civic Drive, more commonly known as the school district operations yard. Again, a status report on those negotiations were provided by staff. In addition, there was a discussion involving property located at 221 South Palm Canyon Drive, commonly known as Rudy's General Store Museum, and the terms and conditions under which the city could acquire that property, and that matter will be a subject for a separate public action tonight. In addition, there was a discussion of facts and circumstances which could give rise to the exposure of litigation in one case. Those facts and circumstances were discussed with the city council in closed session and the authority conferred on the council by Government Code Section 54956.9B1 and 3A and B. The city attorney briefed the council on the facts and circumstances that could give rise to this exposure to litigation and discussed the strategy that staff would be recommending and concurred in by the city attorney to avoid such litigation. And finally, there was a discussion pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9C because the city is considering whether to initiate litigation in two cases, and apparently that's longer than you're used to getting, and I'll stop.
As long as you just hit the tip of the iceberg, I think it's all right. We got it, Bill, thank you very much. I'll turn now to our city clerk for a report on the posting agenda, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the agenda you had before you was posted in accordance with council procedures last Friday. In addition, the council was faxed materials today concerning items two and nine. You also have letters that our office received today that are on file folders in front of your desk concerning item two.
Very good, any questions or comments on those? Clear. Well, we'll now turn to the Housing Authority, the Finance Authority, the Industrial Development Authority, and the community redevelopment agencies have no business scheduled for tonight's meeting. We'll now turn to our city council agenda, first order of business is public comments. I have a number of cards before me, I'll call these names down, and you'll each get three minutes if you'll come forward. Mr. John Brown, followed by Dr. Wayne McKinney, and followed by David Chavira. Chav- Chavira. Mr. Brown, good evening.
Good evening, I'm John Brown, I'm the Executive Director of Desert AIDS Project, and I'm here to speak in regards to the Vista Sunrise Project, and what I'd like to do is, on behalf of all of the partner applicants, I'd like to withdraw our application and thank the council and the city for all their time and attention, and give special regards to all of the members of the community who spent so much time on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Perhaps before we go forward, can I get clarification from the staff based on the withdrawal of that project so that the audience understands the implication of that statement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that means that the agenda item that calls for the resolutions of denial will now become moot because there is no application pending for which the council will need to take an action, and that's agenda item number two. So, agenda item number two now becomes moot.
So, for the purposes of those of you in the audience that came down tonight to address us on item two, we still welcome your comments, you are more welcome to stay for public comments, but item two will not be deliberated tonight because the applicant has indeed withdrawn his application. The project for all practical purposes does not exist. Okay, you all clear on that? So if you, again, we'll go through public comments. Again, I'll call Dr. Wayne McKinney, David Chavira, and Margot Hertz. Evening, Doctor.
My name is Wayne McKinney, I'm with the well and the desert. I have always come here to speak about the homeless before, but tonight I came to speak about the poor, and I would like to remind you that with your statistics on your watch over the past 10 years, that the overall poverty rate for, has gone up 19% in those 10 years, and also for families with children, it's gone up 38%. So the problem remains for the poor, and that health care facility would be a boon for them because right now they have to go to Moreno Valley for the simplest blood tests and for x-rays and that sort of thing. And if you have to go to Moreno Valley, there's only one way the poor can go, they've got to get on that bus, it's a one trip a day, early in the morning, and then they don't get back till after 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So, even though this is withdrawn, I hope that this will come back before the council to address the needs of the poor, and since they represent a very significant part of our city, I don't think that we can really forget them. We have to save that part of the project for sure, and as far as the homeless goes, I'm accepting of the fact that we will have to find another site for the homeless drop-in center.
Dr. McKinney, I'm going to ask your indulgence, the President is on live TV now addressing the nation, I think it's relevant that perhaps we all hear it, and I'll give you, sir, additional time to make your comments. Can we get audio on that this time?
Apparently, we can only do it through the TVs that are up there, so it'll have to be...
See if you can jack it up for us, I think that the people here should hear what the President is saying about our... We think it's relevant, I think, to interrupt the proceedings for this, if you'll all understand that. Notice the sophisticated technology of standing at the desk. Got to be pretty tall, huh, Rick?
If we can do it while you're gone.
Taller people. Stand up.
If this doesn't work, you know who has to stand up.
Yeah. Chris?
There you go.
You got it.
Saddam Hussein has placed Iraqi troops and equipment in civilian areas, attempting to use innocent men, women, and children as shields for his own military, a final atrocity against his people. I want Americans and all the world to know that coalition forces will make every effort to spare innocents and civilians from harm. A campaign on the harsh terrain of a nation as large as California could be longer and more difficult than some predict, and helping Iraqis achieve a united, stable, and free country will require our sustained commitment. We come to Iraq with respect for its citizens, for their great civilization, and for the religious faiths they practice. We have no ambition in Iraq except to remove a threat and restore control of that country to its own people. I know that the families of our military are praying that all those who serve will return safely and soon. Millions of Americans are praying with you for the safety of your loved ones and for the protection of the innocent. For your sacrifice, you have the gratitude and respect of the American people, and you can know that our forces will be coming home as soon as their work is done. Our nation enters this conflict reluctantly, yet our purpose is sure. The people of the United States and our friends and allies will not live at the mercy of an outlaw regime that threatens the peace with weapons of mass murder. We will meet that threat now with our Army, Air Force, Navy, Coast Guard, and Marines, so that we do not have to meet it later with armies of firefighters and police and doctors on the streets of our cities. Now that conflict has come, the only way to limit its duration is to apply decisive force, and I assure you, this will not be a campaign of half-measures, and we will accept no outcome but victory. My fellow citizens, the dangers to our country and the world will be overcome. We will pass through this time of peril and carry on the work of peace. We will defend our freedom, we will bring freedom to others, and we will prevail. May God bless our country and all who defend her.
The President of the United States showing up to everybody's surprise, I think, which may well have been the intention, that when the White House left this evening, President F. D. Don Quixote went up to the private quarters, virtually all the news agencies in town were told that...
For those of you that could not see the TV screen, he had made the presentation, as is the tradition in these circumstances, from the Oval Office, which should indicate to those of you who have seen this before, that's where the President usually declares these sort of military actions.
Don't jump.
Dr. McKinney, I apologize for that interruption, sir, I thought perhaps because of the scale and magnitude of that announcement, you'd allow the indulgence of the President.
Sure.
I will give you now, sir, the remainder of your time, I believe about a minute was left, sir. Thank you, go ahead, sir.
I just wanted to say that I am accepting of the fact that we cannot have a homeless drop-in center at that site, and that we'll have to find another site, but I would like the city to work with us in finding another site, and until that time comes, hopefully you'll let us increase a few services for them at the Frye Building, but that is something for another night and another time, and we're counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. David, followed by Margot Hertz, and then Wallace Brown, please. Good evening, sir.
I'm David Chaviria, C-H-A-V-A-R-I-A. Even though the project has been canceled here, I'd still like to read my letter to you. To the mayor, city council members, members of the planning commission, and to the citizens of Palm Springs, I'm here once again to address my concerns with proposed planning and development of the Crowes Roads Homeless Daycare Center and Housing Project. My understanding at this time is that the city of Palm Springs Planning Commission approved a change in the city's master plan and the zoning change requested by the developers of Vista Sunrise to exclude the homeless shelter, but I still feel there are many loose ends that need to be resolved. Public safety is a major concern, and once again, I'm bringing the issue of the surrounding communities as well as the elementary and junior high students that would be faced with the annoyance and aggravation with the increase of mortar risks, as well as the potential danger to pedestrians, especially mothers with their children who will be crossing this intersection. Liability issues are a great concern. Desert AIDS Project, as landlord, would be facing extraordinary liability issues, but what concerns me the most is my own liability since I live in a non-gated community. What will I and my neighbors be facing if someone for one reason or another wanted to press charges? In my last statement to you, I expressed that one of the reasons I purchased my first home here in the desert was the fact that my community was non-gated and I didn't feel like a prisoner in my home. To this day, my neighbors still want to keep Sagertown free of crime and to show other communities that walls and gates aren't always needed. We have insurance issues, and I for one don't want to see any additional increase in my premiums. False community expectations, I went to see this site many times before, and I'm not an architect or have any education on city planning, but I look at the site and wonder what the future holds for this project. What about the future of the growth of the Coachella Valley as we grow, the needs of the less fortunate will grow as well. We do have enough space to provide for the future, when in fact, I feel that we should look into the space that will allow growth without disruption of established communities. I'm perturbed that this project is still an issue, when in fact, it was voted by you and the city council members 3 to 2 just two weeks prior. My assumption, as well as my fellow neighbors and the rest of the community, all felt that this was going to be a closed chapter. Now it's just a huge storm aggravating the community. You are not playing fair with the citizens of Palm Springs. They trust you in making good decisions regarding the assurance and safety of their communities. Please don't disappoint us. As you can see, the majority of this audience is not in favor of the project, but on the other hand, I can say that we still have compassion for the less fortunate, and would like to see this project erected in a more favorable location. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Margot Hertz, followed by Wallace Brown, and then Sheila Brown, please.
Good evening. If you pull the microphone down a bit, thank you so much.
That's better. Mr. Mayor, Ms. Hodges, Ms. Rella Spurgeon, my name is Margot Hertz, I'm at, live at Ranch Club, and I am the so-called little old lady, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for voting against the erection of the Vista Sunrise campus. You have shown great courage and have taken a big load of my mind, as well as the mind of other seniors and residents of our neighborhood. We are proud of you. Mr. Oden and Mr. Mills, I want to thank you for showing genuine interest and listening to all the pros and cons until the very end. It was democracy at work and made me proud to be an American. Thank you, all of you.
My name is Wallace Brown, I'm a resident of Palm Springs for over five years. Since the homeless drop-in center will not happen, I would ask you once again to increase the amount of days that the project is at the Frye Center, to have it five days a week. Number two, I would ask you to drop the $400 a month charge to them and make it $1 a year as other nonprofit agencies have. We have found from experience in San Jose that many of the homeless do want to work, and they do need a mailing address, so if they could have a mail drop there at that time. They need a telephone line, as I said before, you can block long-distance calls that they would be able to use for work, also email access. They need commercial washers and dryers so that they can have clean clothes when they do go for a job, and they need a shower in that institution. I have heard that the city has spent some kind of funds to improve the doors in the situation. The facility does leak when it rains, as does our house, huh? And so I would ask that those things be done as a temporary solution to assist the homeless so get on, so they could work. I talked to one gentleman who works for a pool service, and he was very appreciable for what we do at Arley of Solitude while he's between jobs. Thank you.
Sheila Brown, followed by Alan Kilfoyle, please.
My name is Sheila Brown, I am a homeowner and voter in Palm Springs. I'm very disappointed with the results of the meeting that canceled the Sunrise Project and the homeless drop-in center. I am a little old lady, perhaps not as old and perhaps not as little, but I am here to speak on behalf of the homeless. I would like to see the Frye Building expanded to five days and to have some of the facilities that Mr. Brown, prior to my speaking, spoke of, and I'm wondering how can I take care of this? What can I do to have this happen? I'd be more than happy to hear from you. You have my address, and I don't believe I put my telephone number, but I am in the telephone book. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alan Kilfoyle, Mr. Kilfoyle here. Very good, that's the last of the cards. If anyone else wishes to address the council during public comments, please come forward at this time.
Ed Dietrich, 2034 Chia in Palm Springs. I'm here representing the Sunrise-Vestacino Neighborhood Association, and I recognize how difficult and at times divisive this conversation has been over the last two months, and we recognize how painful it has been for each of you. I hope we all did what we thought was in the best interest of the community, and even though we've ended up on different sides of the table, our group is committed to assisting this council and any other groups in the city in helping us do something in a constructive sort of way. We appreciate all of your efforts and your constant efforts to provide and work for the good of the citizens and the wealthy, the middle class, and the poor, and all of us would like to stand now and thank you for being with us on this.
Yes, my name's Michelle Martin, and once again, I'm here...
You pull the mic down, thank you.
I'm shorter. Once again, I'm here on behalf of the Desert Sunshine Preschool. We would like to thank you very much for your decision at the last meeting regarding the Vista Sunrise Project. Today, there was a large countywide earthquake drill in which many local schools took part. These drills are very important to help us ensure the safety of our children and to know that in an earthquake, they know to duck and cover. I wish the police chief was still here.
Yes.
Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, there you are. All schools have fire and earthquake drills. Unfortunately, Desert Sunshine is also adding a lockdown drill. Since the last meeting, once again, we have had to herd the children off the playground into the, into the school. This time, a traffic stop on the street next to the playground resulted in the necessity of police officers drawing their guns. The Board of Directors in the school has decided it is now necessary to develop a new security procedure to deal with these types of outside problems. By voting down the Vista Sunrise Project in whole, maybe we will not have to deal with any more problems than currently exist, and we would encourage the police department to try and patrol our area as routinely as possible so that the teachers and the parents of the school and the children feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lanny Swerdlow, One Kadorver Court, Palm Springs, California. Proposition 215 in Health and Safety Code 11362.5 legalized the medicinal use of marijuana in the state of California. Unfortunately, it is the only state law that can be interpreted one way in Alpine County and another way in Imperial County. State Attorney General Bill Lockyer's office has stated that until there are statewide guidelines, his office, quote, "has deferred to local discretion," unquote. Although statewide guidelines have passed the California Legislature several times, they have never been enacted into law due to veto threats, veto or veto threats by Governor Pete Wilson and President Governor Gray Davis. Consequently, there are no statewide guidelines, and unlike several other counties, there are no guidelines at the present time in Riverside County. Until there are statewide or countywide guidelines, it is up to each local city government to enact its own guidelines. Currently, there are no guidelines in Palm Springs regarding the enforcement of Proposition 215. One police officer may come across a medical marijuana patient with two pounds and 20 plants and walk away, while another may find a patient with two ounces and two plants and haul them off to jail. It's the same as having a highway and letting each officer decide what the speed limit is. The situation was very similar in San Diego County, and that is why the city of San Diego just recently passed its own guidelines so that local law enforcement would not affect an arrest of a medical marijuana patient if the amount of marijuana they possessed and cultivated did not exceed the amount specified in the guidelines. At a meeting on Tuesday, March 4th, at Hunter's Video Bar, Police Chief Jenarin stated that he has issued no guidelines of any kind to the Palm Springs police officers regarding this enforcement of Health and Safety Code 11352.5. Until the beginning of 2003, as far as I know, there had been no arrests of any medical marijuana patients by Palm Springs police. Since the beginning of this year, there have been at least two arrests that I am aware of. Although the people being arrested may not qualify as poster children for medical marijuana patients, the fact is that Palm Springs police officers are now arresting them. Yet, these officers have no guidelines on how to recognize a legitimate marijuana Yet, these officers have no guidelines on how to recognize a legitimate medical marijuana patient or how much marijuana a patient may possess or cultivate before determining that an amount is excessive and arrest should be made. To remedy the situation, in Palm Springs, we request that a citizens' task force be formed to look into this issue. The task force composed of patients, law enforcement, medical marijuana organizations, health professionals, and other civic-minded citizens should research the issue and present recommendations of the Palm Springs City Councils for possible action. Until statewide guidelines are issued, Palm Springs should join the 15 counties and six municipalities that have issued guidelines for their local law enforcement agencies. It is the progressive and compassionate path to take. It also supports the will of California voters when they pass Proposition 215 over six years ago and facilitates legal compliance with California state law. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, council, staff. My name's Jim Dowler, resident and business owner in Palm Springs. I'm here primarily tonight as a member of the Tourism Advisory Council to ask for your support for Rocktoberfest. I know Linda will be speaking with you later on. By then, I plan to be home watching it on TV, because I can see it's going to be late. That's my primary reason for being here, to support the Rocktoberfest program coming up this year. We've fine-tuned it a little bit. We've learned a little bit, first time out of the chute last year, and Linda will provide the details on that. So I ask you for your support on that. The other thing I want to mention is, I received the news on today's local section headlines of the local newspaper with mixed feelings. On the one hand, I was very elated for my good friend Dennis, because he's in the process of reacquiring a wife. I'm also happy for Jeannie, because it's clear she is reassessing priorities during this fleeting experience we call life, and I understand that. On the other side of the coin, it saddens me because as an occasional student of council dynamics over about one and a half decades, I have to share with you that personally, from my point of view, I think the existing council is excellent, and I will share this, a different spin on what everybody's been talking about tonight. I wasn't down here for the big session or nor the vote. I read about it in the paper, and I have to tell you, I had to read the section on who voted how twice. I found that interesting. To me, it was a very, very healthy sign. It tells me that nobody can take anybody's vote for granted. You have to get out there and work your council people individually, because they all have minds of their own. These people that thought Chris was a clone of the mayor, they were clearly proven wrong. These people that thought that maybe Ron and Dana were joining the hip, they were clearly proven wrong. Both of those pairs split their votes. I found that interesting and a healthy sign. And finally, Jeannie, I never know where she's going to vote, and I'd find that healthy as well. So I just want to commend the dynamics of the existing council. I thought that vote, the way it came down, indicated a very healthy state of affairs for our city. Thank you.
Some clone, huh? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Yonker, and I live on Buena Vista Drive, and I'll get you my address. I have written to you guys, you're probably tired of hearing from me, email in the middle of the night, because I'm here to speak on behalf of the homeless. I smell like corned beef and cabbage, because we fed, we cooked it today, and then we went down and fed it to the people in the park. In the, I always say "in the park" because I used to be in the park, and I'm thankful that we're in the Frye Building. And I'm very sorry that this whole project didn't go through, because people that are ill need places to live. And the people that, but I, but I accept that, and I accept the people's opinions here of not wanting it in their neighborhood. However, since we are in the Frye Building, the fear that I have is that you'll kick us out, and we'll be back out under those trees, and that would be a shame. Anyway, don't kick the homeless out of the Frye Building. In fact, if we had five, the people, I'm sorry that they left. I have worked with these people for, you know, three years, and they're like my, one of them is a student that I used to have when I was teaching. And if we, we need to do more than just feed them. We need to find rehab or somebody to come in and help them find jobs. We need to take care of them. There was a man came in today, he's really a nice young man, and he's looking for work, and they don't know where to go. And so we're feeding them, and we're feeding them good. We're the best cooks in the desert, I'll tell you. If you call, you want a good meal, we have a chef that's in charge of our cooking. And we are the best cooks, and they, and the fears that people have that they're going to come from all over, they come and try it once, and they like our food, but people have, it's hard to get here. And we've been feeding them for three years that I know of, and the numbers have not increased. Many of them have been able to go on and get jobs. The program that is in the well in the desert is a good program. Don't kick us out of the building. Let us go more. And I tell you, the people here, the other evening I was here, and they said they want to help. And this gentleman that just left said he wants to help. While I'm going into their communities and asking, if you let us go five days a week, these people can make sandwiches on Tuesday, Thursday, and I'll cook Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Cadieux. I'm a 20 of the last 25-year resident in the city of Palm Springs, and I'm here to support Linda Fort and the Palm Springs Bureau of Tourism Advisory Council for bringing back doing Rocktoberfest this year. My experience, the three evenings last year when it was transpiring, was that it was very positive. People were looking at nostalgia. And I've been here long enough to remember that there were a lot of people who came here and they brought their children. And what I noticed, what is, what I noticed was it was their children bringing their children, which is repeat tourism here. And having worked on the advisory council, people, the volunteers worked their bleep off, and I'm sure that they'll do the same thing this year and help book a timeframe during September when ordinarily our hotels may not be as full as we'd like them to be. So that's my save for this evening. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Van Etten, 1379 Berrymore Place, Palm Springs. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Jeannie, I know that we're probably going to have more of an opportunity in the future to formally show our appreciation for everything that you have done for all of the citizens of Palm Springs, but I want to tell you from my heart how very grateful I am and acknowledge how wonderful I think it is that you have chosen to take into consideration yourself and your family at this juncture and concentrate your efforts in that arena. It takes courage, and I admire you and I thank you for everything you've done for us, but I am, I support you 100% in your future endeavors. I was out of the country last week, and there was a town hall meeting at Hunter's that Bill Feingold had put together, and the police chief, Gary Jindren, spoke to the gay community. I am, I am very moved by this gesture. I wrote the mayor and I wrote David Reddy a letter when Chief Gary Jindren was chosen for this job. I think he is a very courageous man who is extending himself to build bridges with facets of our community. He may not always like what he hears, but what a wonderful thing this is that he has done this. And he is an example of what it takes in communicating with all individuals, even though you may not agree with them, to keep those communication lines open. He is a remarkable man, and I am so proud of our city, our police department, and deeply, deeply proud of our police chief. And I really want to thank him for what he did with the gay community recently. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Joy Meredith, and I'm the owner of Crystal Fantasy in beautiful downtown Palm Springs and the president of Main Street. And also tonight, I'm here because I'm also on the Tourism Advisory Board. We discussed Rocktoberfest at our last meeting, and the board did decide unanimously that we supported the idea of Rocktoberfest. Last year's event had to be put together very quickly. There were a lot of obstacles and challenges that we tried to surpass on the way. Some of them we were better at than others, but we feel that in the future, we could be even better at it. The event itself, the theme, has the possibility it'd just be a really great event in its time. And the week that's now chosen, which is September for Rocktoberfest, that's the only little problem to me, but it will truly be the beginning of the season. That, Linda specifically picked those dates, though, based on when the hotels felt that they would need it. So those were deliberate dates, not just an accident or some odd date, but, but when the hoteliers really felt that it was most needed. So I want to be here in support of that, Jeannie. I don't even know what to say. I was a little surprised, a little verklempt, but I'm okay now. But good for you. Right on. I mean, how many years can, you know, you stay at this job? It's, it's a very difficult one, I'm sure. I frankly couldn't even imagine. And, you know, the time and dedication that all of you put onto this, you know, that, that's the thing. When other people want to run for office, they better keep in mind they got some big shoes to follow on this council and, and the mayor's chair and whoever. There's some big shoes here. So anyways, I just want to say, though, I do support Rocktoberfest, and thank you very much.
Anybody else want to say anything? Any other public comments at this time? Yeah. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. Counsel, anything you'd like to say at this time before we go forward?
No.
I will just want, say one thing. There is nothing more difficult for the members of your city council than an issue that divides our city. The challenge we have trying to do the right thing when we're getting pulled, not in an asymmetrical fashion, but equally by both sides, to pick me, pick me, see my views, see my concerns, is a challenge that is, at times, amazing. And the most recent issue we dealt with two weeks ago was one of those. It was a public hearing process, which meant that we had no role in the shaping, designing, or defining of the project. We simply had a public record of which to review and to make some sort of an assessment on. So we sat, as many of you did, through the long process, and then had to take all that data and assimilate it and make a decision. I respect each member of this council in ways that I don't think people have ever heard me say, but each of these members worked real hard preparing, and every one of them sat here as long as I did for hours, listening to every concern, and were swung back and forth through all the testimony. But it is very painful for us as your civic leaders, as your government quarters, to have a city that's divided on an issue. So just be aware of the fact that although it seemed kind of easy, I use the analogy at one point, it's like the professional ice skater. It looks like she's always smiling, and it's effortless, and she does a remarkably easy job, but in reality, it's a lot of work, and it takes a lot of pressure to perform in a way that satisfies the entire city. You may not agree with where we went, but as long as our performance, and I heard some nice comments tonight, and I think the council appreciates that, this was, in fact, democracy in action, and we did try to serve the community as best we could. So thank you. With that, counsel, we'll move to the consent agenda. As stated earlier, item two has been withdrawn. The project no longer exists as per the applicant's request. There remains items one and items three for your review and approval. What's the council's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I need to abstain on three warrants, or two warrants, excuse me. 985486, 985587, both husband-related.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mills.
Also on item three, I need to abstain on one warrant, 985499, business-related.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any other abstentions to be noted?
With that, I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion for approval by Ms. Rella Spurgeon and second by Mr. Oden for items one and three and the noted abstentions. Any further comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Oden.
Aye.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye. It's 5-0. It's deemed unanimous. There are no items for the extended consent agenda. Mr. Reddy, item four is the BMX racing track.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's requested that we withdraw this from the agenda, and we will bring this back and agendize it at a future time.
Thank you, sir. Item four was withdrawn at the request of the city manager. We'll now turn to city council comments, announcements, and/or interagency reports. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I was out, I was ill last week, so I missed a meeting and did not have an opportunity to give my report, which I'd like to do tonight. You missed it. I know you did. On the, the sixth, it was the 12th birthday for Village Fest, and I attended and passed out cake. And Dana, I really missed you at that, because usually we're side by side at that event. On that Sunday, I attended the memorial service for Morris Kite. And for those of you who do not know, Morris Kite was a, an activist specifically for the gay and lesbian community for their rights in the state of California. I also attended the opening of the Kaleidoscope, which was at the Children's Discovery Museum in Rancho Mirage, and the opening of the Yvonne Shee, or the Desert Flower. Chris and I attended the opening service for the Youth League on Saturday. And I attended on Saturday evening, the, a fundraiser for shelter from the storm at the home of Tim and Edra Blixeth. And I'd like to say, earlier, I also attended the Anti-Defamation League recognition dinner where Rick and Marcia Stein were recognized, as well as Tim and Edra Blixeth. On Monday morning, I attended a meeting before the Board of Supervisors in my capacity as the chairman for Riverside County Community Action Commission. Dewayne Knapp, who is the author of Brand Strategy and who is a, who is a former CEO of a Fortune, of several Fortune 500 companies and is a lecturer and consultant, gave his presentation before the Board of Supervisors regarding his work with the National Department for Community Action and how he's worked with us to brand us, to assist us in our branding as a national corporation. On the 26th, it was announced that I would not attend that meeting. And on the 26th, through the 30th, I am supposed to attend a meeting for Cal-Nava, which is California and Nevada Departments of Community Action. And normally, when I attend these special meetings, I don't go on Wednesdays. So I spend the next day playing catch-up, because they generally start on Wednesdays, and I always make sure that I try to attend our council meetings. But since this was the last council meeting, which was going to be a study session, I thought it would be okay. I have changed my reservation, and I will be here for that meeting. I'd just like to make one comment. And it is regarding a letter that went out to Mr. Jeffrey Sankar, who is the promoter for the White Party. And it really doesn't have anything specifically to do with the White Party exactly. It just has to do with, I think, more how we conduct business. And basically, the letter made him aware of the fact that there were some compliance issues that needed to be addressed, but attached to that were 10 pages of compliance issues. That concerns me. It concerns me because of our orientation to business and how we handle not just business, but events that have been coming to our community for 14 years, which are major revenue generators for us. So I, I would like to see at some point some policy that perhaps correspondence that goes out from the city to major promoters, that perhaps there's a review by the city manager so that perhaps we can make sure that the tone of what we're saying truly extends the opportunity and says, this is a place where we love tourism, and we want your business, and we welcome your, your, we welcome you to continue coming to our community. So I'd just like to see something at some point that says that. Thank you.
Mr. Oden, other council comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hodges.
I'm going to take this a little bit out of turn, because it's actually a request, but I see that Mr. Swedlow is still here. I would like to request that on a future agenda, we talk about this citizens' task force that Mr. Swedlow brought up in reference to Proposition 215, and see what we can do so that we in the city of Palm Springs are in compliance and have a policy that would control the legalization of marijuana and how it's handled. So if I could please request that that be put on a future agenda for the council to discuss, I'd appreciate it.
You want the legalization of marijuana or the legal use of medical marijuana?
Legal, what did I say? Yes.
You said the legalization of marijuana.
No, 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 no. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Didn't sound like you, that's why I had to ask.
No, no, no. You know what I'm talking about, right? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Swedlow's ears went up, I think. Mr. Swedlow's ears went up, I think. Thank you. Any other council comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
A few meetings ago, I had requested that, at least I think I did, that staff prepare a letter regarding, to the state legislature regarding not to impose a tax on alternate energy, similar to one that was sent by the City of Palm Desert. And I just would like to get a status report on that letter, and more than that, I'd like to have something for us to look at, maybe in our next packet or something.
Yes, you did.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
Also, I forgot to state that the cabaret convention that came to the city, I did attend a couple of those functions, and especially the opening services that were held at the Annenberg. It was sold out, and it was just a marvelous, marvelous opportunity for people who really love cabaret music throughout the city of Palm Springs to experience, and they are interested in returning. And hopefully, we can make sure that we extend an opportunity to them to return.
Very good. Any other comments? Just real quickly, today, as indicated by some of the public comments, there was a mock drill for an earthquake disaster. The city of Palm Springs is one of many cities in the area that dealt with that. All of the staff that are involved in what they call EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, were actually in the center, doing their task based on a number of tragedies, based on a massive earthquake. Oddly enough, I had a tour group here of 43rd grades from Cielo Vista, and as we went through the building, we were invited to join the EOC. And on the board, under the assumption, again, it's a mock drill, the hospital was damaged, bridges were down, and there was damage to the building at Cielo Vista. So the 3rd graders understood with complete clarity the possibility that all of us have some degree of possible hurt or damage during the event of a disaster. But 43rd, or 30 graders, for two hours, it was an extended tour, longer than I've ever gone. Saturday is, if you drive by the high school, you'll hear a bunch of noise coming out there, and see the parking lots filled. It is the annual Palm Springs Unified School District Meet of Champions, and it is the entire district that shows up, and there are hundreds, if not thousands, of kids that participate. I will be joining this year as the announcer, which I have been doing for, I think, 25 or 6 years. It amazes me that I've done that. My wife will be joining me, helping me to pronounce very difficult names, as we have seen in the past. On Saturday, the American Heart Association will have its annual gala, and the achievement award this year goes to Earl Greenberg. And Earl is, of course, an outstanding member of our community. He has earned and deserves this acknowledgement, and I'll be attending, representing the city in that respect. And then I'll make my annual announcement, as I do every year at this time. For those of you that are interested in knowing, Friday, we'll earmark the annual celebration of the birth of Mr. Ron Oden. And he is always stunned when I bring that forward. Happy birthday in advance, Mr. Oden. And in closing, Ms. Rella Spurgeon, you have, for a better part of 12 years, continued to surprise and delight this member of council in many ways, confuse and conflict me, and then delight me again. But Tuesday's announcement was a card that I did not have anywhere in my hand. I did not see you carrying it. You never tipped that hand to any of us that I'm aware of. I don't think anyone in the community I have met yet was even slightly aware of that possible scenario. But everyone I have talked to, and I joined them, is incredibly impressed with the fact that you took such a strong and bold stance, and declared that you have a life, and that you wish to return to it. And I will suggest to you, as many of us feel, your contributions to this community are longstanding, and are significant, and are appreciated. And it has been, and I'm certain will remain for the remainder of the pregnancy, as you referred to it in our early discussion, that refers to the nine months remaining in her term, will be a delight. And you will be a memory that I will not forget. You're a friend coming in, and you're a friend leaving. You're a lady with great honor and great dignity. Thank you for your service, my dear. Missed anything you wrote up for me to read?
No.
Oh, wait. An amendment, all right. Very good. Any other council comments at this time? Otherwise, we'll turn to our legislative calendar. And counsel, I'm going to ask, because we have individuals in the audience, that item nine be advanced. And for the purposes of clarification, it is not Rudy, it is Ruddy. Ruddy General Store gift donation, item number nine. Mr. Ready, if you would, your staff's report, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this name that's somewhat a close in mind in nature, or as my grandfather would say, a good Irish name, Mr. Ruddy, this is in regard to the donation of the gift, the donation of the general store. Actually, Assistant City Manager Troy Bootsloff has been working with this project, and he is going to give the staff report on this. Thank you.
Trish, you want to give this to Ron?
Ron Oden. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. And Mr. Ready, thank you for the introduction. It's a rare opportunity when staff can come before council and talk about something really wonderful, but we're talking about a wonderful little treasure that the city has in downtown Palm Springs, and that's the Ruddy 1930 General Store, located at the Village Green. The 1930s General Store is a California nonprofit benefit corporation established in 1985 by collector James Ruddy. The museum, which I said is located at the Village Green, is a recreation of a small-town general store from the 1930s. Mr. Ruddy had actually constructed this store back in 1985, and donated the building to the city, and then ultimately leased back the building from the city to house the general store. The store houses approximately 6,000 unused items and individual products, 95% of which are filled with the original product that they were manufactured in, from the 1930s, 1940s. It's really a truly remarkable museum. Mr. Ruddy has informed the city that he is going to resign from the Board of Directors of the museum, and as a result, the current bylaws and articles of the corporation governing the nonprofit corporation require that upon his resignation, the museum's assets, including its collection and sizable trust account that Mr. Ruddy has established to support the museum's operation, are to be distributed back to the city or to a nonprofit fund, foundation, or corporation established by the city, and organized for the continued operation and maintenance of the museum. Mr. Ruddy is here tonight to gift this museum and its contents to the city, and we have four items tonight for the city council to consider from. One is to approve a minute order terminating the lease agreement the city has with Mr. Ruddy for the 1930s General Store. Second is to accept and assume control of the 1930s General Store museum and its unique collection of period merchandise. Third, to authorize the city manager to designate three city employees and/or representatives of the city to serve on the Board of Directors of the 1930s General Store until such a time as either the current nonprofit corporation has merged into another entity, or the city decides to do something different with that corporation. And finally, to appoint a subcommittee comprised of two members of the city council to work with a subcommittee consisting of two members of the library board to examine current and future uses for the Village Green. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding this proposed recommendation or recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Bootsloff, members of the council. You have before your staff report. Any questions or comments you'd like to make at this time?
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden?
There are three that are listed, but you gave four.
Correct. One, we want to do simply because regardless of what the city council takes action tonight, we need to terminate the lease with Mr. Ruddy, so that there is no longer a lease for the building. The other three are discretionary on the council's part.
I think to clarify your question, Mr. Oden, the first one represents the two minute orders, so those are two actions, and then item two and three are the third and fourth one. So you'll see attached, I know it says one on the agenda, but there are actually two minute orders. Those are the two actions. And item two and item three would become then the third and fourth action.
Yeah, okay.
It is indeed confusing on the first blush. Again, one terminates, and then one, in fact, accepts. Correct?
Yeah.
I believe so. Okay. We do have, in fact, a subcommittee. Mr. Oden and Mr. Mills have been working on this. Are there any comments, gentlemen, you'd like to make at this time to help us to clarify and understand what's going on?
Well, since we've, I think, had, I think, a good staff report, I will move the minute orders.
Your actions are to approve the minute orders. You want to separate the actions on the designation of the employees by the city manager as a separate action? Or do you want to include that in your?
Those would just be floor motions, Mr. Mayor, if you would just make those, because there's no minute orders prepared for those two items.
So the minute orders did not cover what I was asking?
The mayor was correct when he said there was two minute orders covering numbers one and two, that is, the termination of the existing lease and the acceptance of the museum's collection.
Right.
The third and fourth item, which is one, to authorize the city manager to designate three employees and to appoint a subcommittee, are separate items that we'd ask for separate actions on.
Okay.
All right, then with that, we've got a motion to move the minute orders by Mr. Oden. Who made second?
I did.
Mr. Mills, thank you. Any additional comments on the minute orders before you?
Ms. Mayor?
Ms. Hodges?
I would just like to say thank you. Thank you to the Ruddy family for giving this to us. I think it's a tremendous asset for the city of Palm Springs, and it's a very generous donation that you're giving us. Thank you.
Good point, Dana.
Here, here. Any further questions or comments? Otherwise, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye, five oh. The remaining actions before you are the city manager's authority to appoint the three employees.
That's fine.
And the subcommittee is, I think, as currently, Mr. Mills and Mr. Oden.
Yes.
Going to get a motion to that effect?
Similar.
Second.
Again, a motion by Mr. Oden, second by Ms. Rella Spurgeon. And again, Mr. Ready, you have the three employees that you can select, and both gentlemen are willing to serve on the subcommittee? Mr. Mills, Mr. Oden?
Yes.
Any further questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's five oh. Mr. Ready, we'll need a subcommittee at your soonest convenience, excuse me, members designated, and then we'll have the subcommittee. Mr. Oden, I believe you have an action that you are going to do for the city council.
Yes. And do we have any representatives here today?
Yes, I believe Mr. Ruddy is in the.
Mr. Ruddy is in the audience, as is his wife. If you'll both come down, we'd like to present you with something. I believe Mr. Oden has a surprise.
Way back in the back.
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to read this to you. This is presented to James R. and Sue O. Ready for your outstanding service and generosity to the community. We thank you for your wonderful donation of authentic general store merchandise from the 1930s and early 1940s. Your gift will ensure that a piece of history is forever preserved so that others may glimpse into our past. Ready General Store Museum, 1987 through 2003, Palm Springs City Council, March 19, 2003. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The subcommittee's going down, huh?
Yeah.
The great ones of the subcommittee. Jim, you want to say a few things and share your thoughts with perhaps the city of Palm Springs? I think we'd welcome them.
I just want to say how happy I am that the city is going to be able to continue preserving this time capsule of a period of time when this city was being formed. 1938 is the midpoint of my museum, and that is when the city of Palm Springs was incorporated. So you have a time capsule of that period, which should help our senior citizens think back and use their memories for nostalgia. And just remember that there's only a $0.95 admission charge, and there's nothing for sale inside. So the most you can spend is $0.95. Thank you very much again.
Very good. Let's now return back to our action calendar. First item before us would then be item five, the Frank Sinatra Museum and Theater. Mr. Ready?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have this evening a staff report from, actually, I believe it's Mr. Ben Benson. This idea is the idea of a Frank Sinatra museum, and Mr. Benson is going to, in essence, give the staff report. If, Mr. Mayor, if you could give a 10-minute on the time clock, he has a 10-minute report. In essence, it's a presentation of what he is requesting. And in essence, he is requesting of council this evening your approval of a letter of recommendation from the mayor, and the letter is in your packet. In essence, a mayor approving the mayor to sign a letter of recommendation that you are in support and concept of the idea of a Frank Sinatra museum in our downtown. And Mr. Benson is here today, and he is going to give us a brief presentation of the project. And with that, I give you, Mr. Benson. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Benson Flansbaum, and I want to talk to you a little bit about the Frank Sinatra Theater and Museum. It's a proposal that we've put together, and there are pictures in back that you could take a look at, and give you a little bit of an idea of what our concept is in doing this. As you people all know, Frank Sinatra was a member of this community, lived here for over 50 years, and did a tremendous, a lot of good to the Palm Springs area, and was seen locally all over the community. The concept that we've come up with is to honor Mr. Sinatra with a Frank Sinatra Theater and Museum, which is at the site of the original Saks Fifth Avenue building, at the northeast corner of Palm Canyon and Ramon Road. This building has the critique for what we're trying to do, and we've had Gensler, renowned architect, who did the Palm Springs Airport, do the design for the building. This attraction would draw a tremendous amount of people, because we're talking about a theater seating 400 people, and also, we're going to have a museum, which is 7,500 square feet in the balcony, and we'd have a gift shop, as well as a restaurant and cabaret part of the project. And what we're looking for now is an acknowledgement from the city recommending this project, and also a declaration for December 12th, which was Frank Sinatra's birthday, as Frank Sinatra Day here in Palm Springs. I myself have been a resident here of 47-plus years, and have seen all the many different things that Frank Sinatra has done in our community here. And I'm sure many of us recognize the things that he's done in the Desert Hospital, and the Barbara Sinatra Center, and also how he helped the Temple Isar and their building fund, along with so many members of the community here, that Frank, in his own way, helped them. And it's my pleasure to be associated with this project, and trying to put this together so that it would be part of the community. And I might say that this project also will meld into what the Follies has done. The Follies, as we know, has done a tremendous job in the community, and this would be in addition to it, and it would be at the other end of town, and it would certainly add another tourist attraction, as well as produce tremendous revenue to the city of Palm Springs. To the best of my knowledge, there's no other Frank Sinatra museum in the country today. There was an article in your package, you'll see in the LA Times, just a week ago, regarding the Frank Sinatra, and some of the things were done, and some of his memorabilia were there for a short period of time. But we're talking a permanent location, and the proceeds of this venture will go to the Barbara Sinatra Center, as well as to the Sinatra family charities. So what we're requesting from you people tonight is to give us a recommendation of your approval of the project, and also a declaration of December 12th as Frank Sinatra Day. Now, the State of Nevada did that for Frank Sinatra some time ago. The governor made, I think it was May 14th, Frank Sinatra Day. And in my personal opinion, I think it would be a nice thing if we could do that. Our project is well on the way, and we're hoping to have this project completed, hopefully, by Frank Sinatra's birthday, December 12th. And I thank you very much for your time, and any consideration you'd give us on this project would certainly be appreciated. Oh, I might add that I received a fax today from Jilly's Restaurants in Chicago, they're in Chicago, and New York, and other places, that they have told us that they want to come into this project, and they want to bring Jilly's back also to Palm Springs, which a lot of people remember Jilly's. a lot of people remember Jilly's, and certainly everybody remembers Jilly Rizzo, who was Frank Sinatra's best friend. Thank you very much for your time, and we certainly appreciate your recommendation to this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ruddy, anything else on your staff report?
The stand's on its own. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, what's before you is the draft letter of a letter recommending support for this project. I would sign this only if recommended by the council majority.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon.
Don't you ask me how much I like Frank Sinatra?
How much do you like Frank Sinatra?
So much that I named my son after him.
Your son's name is Frank Sinatra?
Francis Albert. I would love to see this project in the city of Palm Springs. I think it would be just a great addition. I remember when he used to go downtown. I think it would be a wonderful thing, so I would move that motion.
I will second it, but I have a question. Is it possible for us to make recommendations to any changes in the letter at this point?
By all means, if they.
Okay, then that's fine.
You want to make the recommendations now?
No.
What if you make changes and they don't like the changes? Some clone, huh? You know what I'm saying?
That's you all over again.
All right, what recommendation do you have, sir?
I just think in the second paragraph, I would start with something a bit more positive.
He did reside here.
Not saying where he wasn't or he didn't reside, but just that he was a member of our community.
Can you just strike the opening phrase, although Mr. Sinatra did not actually reside in Palm Springs?
Actually, he did reside here, though.
Yes, he did.
He did have a home here.
Yes.
Yes.
What do you want to say, then? A little word, Smithy can't hurt.
Yeah, let me see.
Want to add a phrase, Jeannie, about your son being named? Do you want to add that?
Okay, because he was a member of or a resident of Palm Springs, we feel. That's fine.
Because he, want to write that down? On the paragraph that starts with although, you want to state?
Or in as much.
Yeah.
In as much as he was a resident in Palm Springs, comma, and then follow the rest of it, "we feel."
Yes.
You're okay with that?
That's fine.
Counsel, are you with that word change?
Yes.
All right? Okay, make her, P.S., Jeannie Rella Spurgeon's son is Frankie, okay. All right, any other changes here? Maker and second are okay with those amendments?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Five oh, unanimous. I'll get this prepared for you as quickly as my secretary can type it up.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll go to item six, and this is the TIP Trauma Intervention Program. I believe, Dana, this is at your request. Mr. Ruddy?
Yes, I would ask Chief Fried, the fire chief, to come to the microphone. We do have members from SEVAG who are going to do the presentation this evening, and I would turn it over to the fire chief at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ruddy, Mayor and city council. This was a request by Ms. Hodges to have this brought forward. It has been presented at numerous meetings in SEVAG, and Ms. Aurora Kerr is here from SEVAG to assist in the presentation of the trauma intervention program, and I won't go into any detail because I'm sure their presentation will. I believe you have a rather lengthy staff report in front of you, and I do wish that you remember that we have had a number of volunteers over the last number of years working in our chaplain program, and we have had a very successful chaplain program over the years. With that, I will defer to Ms. Aurora Kerr in her presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Fried. Aurora, welcome. Aurora, is anyone else coming down from SEVAG, or is it you, the whole show?
No, sir. As a matter of fact, the new executive director of SEVAG is here in the audience with me, John Wilmouth.
Good evening, John.
Mayor and council, we are here in follow-up to SEVAG Executive Committee action to present the trauma intervention program for your determination and action to financially participate in the program. I understand you have your staff report, but there is also a packet of information that was sent out to the assistant city manager and to the fire chief explaining the program. It was also sent out to the HCR, Human Community Resources representative at, you know, from SEVAG, Ms. Hodges. This information should have been in your packet. This information describes the TIP program in detail. It also describes the process that SEVAG went through, how it came to SEVAG, and the process that it's gone through at SEVAG to come to the cities. It provides a cost analysis of what each city would be paying as well as information, backup information on the program. This is not in your staff report. So I do have copies of it here. I'm happy to give them out to you, and whether or not you would like to continue with the presentation, or if you would like to have us come back at another time when you've had an opportunity to review this information, I certainly leave it up to council.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
I have a couple of questions. I'm not sure if they'll be answered in the material or not, so, I mean, I can.
We do have also a short video that talks, that we would like to show, but again, it's up to you as to whether or not you'd like us to continue.
Let's see the video then.
Let me suggest this. Let's get the questions from Mr. Oden out, so in case his questions come up, we can see what he's concerned about, at least in the video, or hear your comments.
Okay, and just before you, council member, please, I'd like to ask Wayne Fortin, who is the CEO and president of the TIP program, to come and join me, and I'm sure he'll be able to answer your questions as well.
I'm sure that you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden?
I'm sure that you've been made aware of our chaplains program. What would be the difference, either in focus or function?
We work with chaplains, the TIP program works with chaplains programs across the country in a variety of different ways. For example, in Orange County, which the fire department has a major chaplains program, we work side-by-side with them, again, in a number of specific ways. One might be in a large family that's traumatized or a major incident, the chaplain and the TIP volunteers are working side-by-side. It might be that a male chaplain calls for a TIP volunteer to deal with a female rape victim or domestic violence victim. It may be, frankly, that a victim just does not want a chaplain for what that conveys, and in that case, would call for a TIP volunteer. A TIP volunteer might call for a firefighter, a fire department chaplain, when the people that we're dealing with want a clergy person, but their own clergy people aren't available for whatever, for whatever reason. It might be that a chaplain is dealing with a Spanish-only speaking person, for example, victim, and calls for a TIP volunteer who's, excuse me, who's bilingual. So these programs, from our experience across the country, chaplains and TIP, really complement each other. That's been our experience. As a matter of fact, two of our TIP chapters are run by fire department chaplains.
Okay.
Can I say one more thing? I think another thing the TIP would do would be, we use lay citizen residents of your community, and I think this program would really involve members, resident, ordinary people in your community to do this extraordinary work. There are a lot of people out there these days that want to get involved in public safety, and this is a concrete way to do it.
How many would be trained as a result of this contribution?
We would estimate that we would train, we have two training academies per year. We estimate that we would graduate 30 volunteers per academy.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions before we start the video? Perhaps the video. And Aurora, if anytime during the video you want to make additional comments, please feel free to do so. Could we dim the house lights, serve the popcorn?
This is the ending of the, the program should start shortly.
There are some government programs that are simple, call nearly nothing, and make you say, what a good idea. The fire department in Portland, Oregon has such a program. It's called TIP. It's a three-alarm fire at 3:00 in the morning. No loss of life, but the people who used to live here are an emotional wreck. When I first saw and met the tenants, they were all sitting, watching their home burn, and they're kind of in shock. Not a whole lot of words, just an arm over a shoulder, holding someone's hand. Sue Chambers is a TIP volunteer, a modern-day Good Samaritan. She's been trained to go to the scene of a tragedy and give psychological first aid to those suffering from terrible loss. There's nothing heroic about putting an arm around someone or giving them a big hug, because people just need to know that somebody cares, that they're okay. That's the tough situation you're in, you know? You know I am. A year ago, NBC Nightly News ran this story from San Diego about the first TIP program in the country. The Ford Foundation thought TIP was such a good idea, it gave them a $100,000 grant to help them go nationwide.
Southwest Moon's Ferry Road, female, 73, heart history, shorter breath, and is pale.
The fire chief of Portland and top city officials saw the NBC story and brought TIP to Portland. Now, TIP volunteers are routinely sent out by the fire dispatchers.
When I got to the scene, there were already three engines there. There was a rescue, lots of cops. She had hit a patch of ice on the on-ramp, skidded across the median, and hit a semi-truck head-on. She soon later died. The truck driver was so distraught of what had happened, it really got inside of him. And what I realized right away was, this guy's got to be pulled out, you know, because the victim in the truck was, she was gone, but he had scars that I could heal on the inside, and that's what trauma intervention is, healing the scars of the heart. We got his personal belongings together, we got his gear out, his sleeping bag. So we made up a list of things to do, where to stay for the night, call your boss and call your wife. They gave him a goal to do, things to accomplish, and then he starts to feel better. When I was getting ready to leave, he finally sat down and realized what had happened. Someone had passed away right in front of him at the wheel that he was driving. The enormous feeling that what had happened in front of him only two hours before finally hit him, and he broke down. And I was glad that someone was there to help him, to take care of him, and to let him know that he wasn't alone.
The progress of the victim depends a lot on the help that they receive immediately. Just being there and holding their hand, putting their arm around them, telling you're there, you're there for them can make all the difference in the world as to how quickly they go through the maze of recovery that's ahead of them.
So in Portland, they're training volunteer angels, housewives, construction supervisors, insurance salesmen. What are they teaching them? How to help anybody traumatized by life. Parents who've lost a child, spouses who've confronted a suicide.
I could hear his music playing out in the garage, and I went out there and I discovered him in the garage, and I immediately went into a state of shock. I had four children asleep. It was in the early morning, and I was afraid that they would somehow stumble in there and find him.
I think the most important thing I did was to hang on to her emotionally and psychologically.
She walked in the door. I just remember standing by the door, and she said, "Hi, Aunt Barb," and she gave me a hug.
Frequently, people grieving just need silence, and they need you just to be there and be close and be quiet.
At that time, it felt good to hug, really good. It just helped the pain, to help, to squeeze some of the pain out a little bit. And that was to go out and hug a stranger, for her to come into my home and hug me and not know me, I thought that was really something.
There's no way to keep terrible things from happening to good people, but now, there's a way to recruit the Good Samaritans among us and let them do what they can do. And we'll have more on today after these messages.
That concludes the video. Mayor and council, we leave it to your discretion as to whether you'd like us to proceed or if you would like to continue this item and review the SEVAG staff report.
Is there a SEVAG staff report? Asked to review something I don't have a copy of.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hodges?
I'm going to leave this up to the rest of the council because I do have the staff report, and unfortunately, it's a shame that it wasn't presented along with the other material, and I'm not sure why it wasn't, but it wasn't. But you might want to look it over because I do think it's a tremendous program, and I think that it would be beneficial to all of the Coachella Valley, and of course, we would be just a small part of it. So I'll give you a few minutes to take a look here, whatever you decide, if you want to continue on or bring this back at another meeting.
My first blush is it's a lot to read in a short period of time to try to get some kind of a response. Is there any sense of urgency to take action on this? Is there a pending schedule? Is there a date?
Well, we would like to get the program up and going by July 1st. As of now, I will tell you that the cities of Coachella, Desert Hot Springs, Indian Wells, La Quinta, Palm Desert, and Rancho Mirage have taken action to approve their participation in the TIP program.
What's the status of those cities you cited based on how they handle things now? Do they have a chaplain program? What do they have, an intervention program?
Some of the cities do have, La Indio does have a chaplain program. And again, you know, I did read your, the staff report, and would like to clarify that in no way are we asking the council to replace what you have now with TIP. That is not the intention. This program works together and complements what you have already.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hodges?
We've been looking at this at SEVAG, what, since November, December? And I know we're one of the last ones to bring this forward because of our time schedule, so I'm sure, you know, as quickly as possible, may not have to be tonight, but if everybody wants to read it and we could talk about it next week, that would probably be fine, too.
All right, continue with the, can we schedule this? What's the next meeting we can bring it forward? Two weeks? Can you give me a date? Do we continue this, too? I just wanted the opportunity to read this and obviously ask questions and.
Bring it to him. April 2nd is the next regular meeting.
I guess Dana has a copy because she was on the exec.
Right.
Well, we have is what's in the packet, which is.
Exactly. And that's unfortunate that it wasn't presented also. Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Rella Spurgeon?
My concern, I certainly love the program, I mean, it's me, but where do we get the $5,136.84? That would be my concern. When we have a program that's up and going now from volunteers, the differential, so... Well, that program does cost, too. Actually, $5,000, we could probably take it out of our executive. A thousand?
Mr. Mayor?
Not even notice that it's gone. Two thousand?
Mr. Mayor?
So that needs to be part of what comes back?
Okay, Mr. Oden?
Yes. When is our CDBG program supposed to come before us, and would this be an appropriate use?
Can't guarantee it's low mod. Can't, you can't guarantee the income profile of the victim.
If, I'd agendize this for the next meeting, and I'd get some of those answers for you, then I'll have some funding sources.
You can bring forth the report on how CDBG could be used, under what conditions, but I think you'd have a really complicated job of administering CDBG funds through this. And maybe TIP has some experience in trying to deal with it in the past, but you respond because there's a need.
Yeah.
I haven't got a guy fill out an application and show you tax returns.
That's our experience. We're dealing with the general public and not low income, and we haven't been successful at getting funding in that.
Right, I appreciate that thought. If today is the 19th, when's our next meeting for this, for the rescheduled? Twenty sec, what is it?
April 2nd.
April 2nd? Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to continue this to April 2nd.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hodges. Any other comments?
Mayor, I just wanted to also hand out, I have handouts here, they're a letter of support from Captain John Horton with the Indio Station Commander with the County Sheriff's Department. Captain Horton is part of this team, but could not be here tonight. We also had a letter of support from Fire Chief Mike. We also had a letter of support from Fire Chief Michael Warren with the City of Corona, a letter of support from Lou Benninger, a fire police chaplain and TIP coordinator with Yuba Sutter Counties in Northern California, and a letter to chaplains regarding emergency service agencies dated September 2001 regarding the TIP, from Chaplain Lynn Cohen, who's TIP coordinator in Lebanon, Oregon, and chaplain with the Lebanon Fire Department. And I'll pass those out.
Great, thank you, Aura. Council, any further comments? All's in favor continuing to the 2nd, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 5-0. This will be brought back on the April 2nd.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to Item 7, which is 2002, 2003 allocated positions and compensation plan. This is the Second Amendment for the Police Department. Mr. Ready, I'll turn to you for a staff report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a, or, this is a request, actually, the compensation plan, this allocation position is an actual savings of approximately $1,980. It is precipitated because of a retirement in the Police Department in the administrative secretarial pool. We're downgrading that administrative secretarial position, and it is required that we believe the chief believes he needs a custodian supervisory position in the jail. And what that means is the net result is approximately a $2,000 savings to the general fund, and it is recommended that we approve this position, these changes. The net result is the same number of positions with the savings to the general fund. It's part of the chief's reorganization plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. Members of the council, questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question. So the change in title of the position is where the saving comes from?
Yes, one position is downgraded, one position is upgraded, but the net result is a savings of approximately $2,000.
Okay, additional questions?
I'll move the resolution.
Aye.
Got a motion by Ms. Rallos-Purgeon, and a second by Mr. Mills. Ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rallos-Purgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It's deemed 5-0 and unanimous. Item 8 is a PERS contract amendment for the Palm Springs Police Office's ordinance for[735.69][735.69]introduction and first reading. Mr. Ready?
Members of council, this is a companion to the contract that council passed with the PSPOA regarding a benefit. This is a contract with PERS that memorializes that benefit, with the PERS actually, the California Retirement System, and this is for first reading, and it is strongly recommended that you approve this measure.
This is a follow-up on prior actions?
Yes. That is correct.
Okay.
I'll move the resolution and the ordinance.
Second. Motion for approval on Ms. Rallos-Purgeon, and a second by Mr. Mills. Additional comments by council? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to read title, waive text.
Please.
Thank you.
This will be an ordinance of the City of Palm Springs, California, authorizing an amendment to contract between the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System and the City Council of the City of Palm Springs.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rallos-Purgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It's 5-0, it's deemed unanimous. Item 9 was handled earlier this evening in our council calendar. Item 10 is the Clean Cities Conference. Mr. Ready?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this, it was agendized, Mr. Mayor, you had mentioned this last week, this is regarding the conference and the request to waive the golf fees for the conferees. This is before you, the recommendation to actually do that, waiving of the fees, and the staff report is before you. Mr. Michael is here to answer any specific questions that you might have.
Okay. Council, questions?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. I thought, do we have a policy in place for this type of a situation? I thought we did.
Yes, we do.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Yes, ma'am, we certainly do have a policy, and the policy is met in all the criteria on this with one exception. It didn't make it to you quite under the timelines that it's supposed to. But it does occur during the weekday, which was one of the primary stipulations of the policy when you established it some three, four years ago. And I would add one thing, it's an afternoon tournament, as opposed to an early morning tournament, so this is the maximum impact that we would expect on this day in May, which is towards the tail of our season. And then, any players that would not participate in this tournament, we would open it up to the public. This is probably a bit of an optimistic gesture, 100 players, probably get more around 70 or 80, and then we would backfill that with the public, whomever didn't sign up for the conference.
Public can still play at the same time.
Correct.
The intent here is obviously, as indicated by the last line of the summary, that we would be the title sponsor representing the City of Palm Springs' commitment to clean city efforts. As Mr. Michael indicated, it is midweek, and it is afternoon. It is probably the least demand on the course. It does get us that title sponsorship position, it does represent some, again, support for the work. And I'm not certain, but I know the staff was trying to negotiate this offer on this side with this tournament sponsorship against possible booth allocations in the conference itself in an offsetting charge, so that we'd actually be buying, if you will, our booths. I'm not certain we have that, so I don't want you to think that's a commitment, but they're still trying to negotiate that. So there's what's before you. And this is here at my request, if there's a problem with the schedule, it's not staff's fault. I brought this up as soon as I found out about it, and we got it on here as quick as we could, so. I know it's a late request, but it's something I know the council has an interest in dealing with clean city issues.
I'll move the minute order.
Second.
Motion for approval on Ms. Rallos-Purgeon, and a second by Mr. Mills. Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rallos-Purgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It's 5-0, it's deemed unanimous. Council, thank you for your consideration on this issue. We'll turn now to the 11th item, which is Rocktoberfest, which will be held this year in September. And we'll ask for Mr. Ready to have his staff report.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Linda Ford from Tourism had requested to come before council to give a brief presentation and make the request for council support for Rocktoberfest for next year. It occurs, actually, it occurs in the next fiscal year, but she wanted to talk to you about support, because she needs to start garnering support from other agencies and other businesses and nonprofits prior, well, in advance of the event. So with that, I would ask Ms. Ford to come to the microphone, and she will give the report on this subject. Thank you.
Oh, she's got props. The girl's got props.
Well, last year I had music, this year I have pictures.
Oh, she's got more props.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. I am here to talk very quickly about Rocktoberfest, never mind the fact that it's the last weekend in September. We came up with the name last year, and it has stuck, and so we're calling it Rocktoberfest, even though it is the end of September. We need your approval in order to get working on this earlier than we did last year. Last year, we did it in a three-month timeframe. The people that you see on the board here are the ones that we are proposing to book, and I know all of y'all are young enough that you don't know who these people are, and you won't recognize the music, but, you know, we have Fabian, Leslie Gore, Lou Christie, B.J. Thomas, Big Bopper Jr., the Tokens, the Drifters, the Sherels, just a dynamite act. And I know that you probably have some older friends that could help you with this music here. Last year, we had asked the hotels to track the business that came in as a result of Rocktoberfest. 14 of our hotels did do that. We know that we generated at least 1,380 room nights specifically here for Rocktoberfest. If you turn that into an average ADR of $100 a night, I'm sure Mr. Canar could come up with a really good figure, because I wouldn't even, yes, I wouldn't even try to do that. But, you know, for a first-time event, in putting it together in three months, we were very, very pleased with the room nights. We have worked with the Main Street group. We would not ask for us to be a part of Village Fest, as we did this past year. We would not ask for Palm Canyon to be closed down until mid-afternoon on Friday, with the exception of the intersection at Baristo and Palm Canyon, where we would once again put up the stage. What we would like to do is have it start Friday night, go through Saturday, Saturday night. The merchants ask us to extend it into Sunday in order to continue to drive business downtown on Sunday afternoon. We gave the hotels a choice on dates. First of all, we asked them if they wanted it back, and they said yes. Then we gave them options on dates, and the majority asked for the last weekend in September, so that's how we came up with that date. We have, you know, we learned a lot last year. We did, we did a lot of good things, we have things that we need to work on. We would be outsourcing the operational side of it, as well as the classic car side of it, and so I'm before you tonight. I do have just a very brief video, if I could show you, just to give you an overview of what Rocktoberfest was all about last year.
Okay, make sure your volume is up on TV again, so that we can get it on for...
October 10th, 2002, Palm Springs, California, the city's main thoroughfare, Palm Canyon Drive. But on this Thursday, it becomes Palm Canyon Alive.
I actually had done this before in Texas, and rock and roll transcends all ages. Even people who may not recognize the name of the entertainers, they know the music, and it's the music that's the draw. Welcome to Rocktoberfest number one.
Welcome down to the stage of Vegas, rock and roll band on the ground. Rock and roll!
Enthusiasts from throughout the West brought their primed and pampered and polished classics to Palm Canyon Drive for public view. Rocktoberfest was also designed to entertain the entire family, even the children. On day two, the Atlas Restaurant and Dance Club was the scene of an autograph party where the famed stars of the '50s and '60s and '70s met with their fans.
Got my photos, see? Tommy Rowe. Want to sign those for the fans, give them away?
And as the show started, even those from the audience got into the act. The crowd and the main stage came alive, especially when Frankie Ford chewed his What can you say about Rocktoberfest 2002? Over 100,000 people rocked, rolled, and enjoyed the three wondrous days, the nights of magic, the moments of remembrance, family fun, music from a past age that still lives today. That was Rocktoberfest 2002 in Palm Springs, the time when Palm Canyon Drive came alive with excitement, romance, poodle skirts, Fonzie jackets, and thousands swinging to a music that lives for generations.
Rocktoberfest 2002, I'm asking for your formal support for Rocktoberfest 2003. If you have any questions, I am here to answer them for you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
Would you explain to me what you mean by outsourcing the operational portion?
We would hire Mike Heron, as we did last year. He would be the liaison with the city, with the SEP team, with putting, making sure that all the electrical cords are in the right places, the health, just working with them, which doesn't take anything away from what we need to do.
Okay. I attended Rocktoberfest, and I certainly had a good time, and I'd like to see it again. I just have a couple of concerns. As I am reading the staff report, in the second paragraph, there's a response to the question that last year, the perception is that we put so much effort into the event that we ignored our job. This is not true. Not one sales trip, trade show, promotion, et cetera, was canceled. That, to me, it really isn't the issue whether those functions were not, were done or were not done, or if there were specific changes. I guess, I don't see the job of the Bureau as producing events. Last year, under the circumstances, I think you did an exceptional job in responding to a specific situation that was needed. We needed to do something. You did an exceptional job at that. And I'm glad that we're starting earlier this year, but I'd like to see promotion of the city and not really producing events. I'd like to see someone else kind of take this over, and as are the rest of the events that come into the community. So I think if we get past it this year, I'd really like to see someone come in and produce this event, and we can actually, from our Bureau, just promote the city.
Other council questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Ms. Ford, on the staff report, and I don't know if you've seen it, 1182, it reads, "We have hired a professional fundraiser who will get a percentage of whatever she raises, thus making our financial investment considerably less." Could you explain that a little further?
Yes, last year, we raised over $450,000 of in-kind services, $45,000 in cash, and then our contribution, which was for air transportation, advertising, flyers, posters, we spent probably close to $60,000. We raised the $45,000 in cash in a very short period of time. So by having somebody come in who is going out to national sponsors, where we can get more cash donated, that reduces the amount of cash that we would put out, and we don't actually have to pay her to raise the fund, she's doing it on a commission basis.
Thank you.
Linda, in your package you handed out tonight, there's a letter from, I believe it's Main Street.
Yes, sir.
Right, and they gave you an initial nod. They say here they want more detailed information. My only thought is, it looks as though Main Street supports the event, as evidenced by this letter. What additional information are they waiting for?
Well, specifically, they would like... Well, specifically, they would like to have more involvement with placement of vendors. We talked about actually giving them booth space outside of their stores so they could have higher visibility during the event. So it was more working along those, those lines that they would like to have some, you know, partnership in, which we think is great because it's more, that's the whole reason for this. So that's fine with us.
I'm glad to see there was no, per se, opposition from Main Street, concern about businesses, street closures, as you can well imagine. The closures is always a concern. We want to support events. It's good and a positive event to occur, to have people come to downtown. But if it causes, obviously, heartache or heartburn for our downtown merchants, then we feel like we're kind of forcing it down there. But it didn't appear in the meetings I saw, in the notes in your packet, there was any opposition at all.
No. And we've talked with them several times. I've gone before the board and they're very, they very much embraced the event.
Good. And your tentative outline indicates you'll begin at 6:00 PM and end at 10:00 PM. So you're not really, you're not going past the traditional noise ordinance by time.
Uh-uh.
So there's not even a factor there. When we suspend the ordinances, what noise aspects are we suspending? If we're not going past the 10 o'clock hour, can I get clarification, please?
Normally for an event, the ordinance is suspended in its entirety for the duration of the event. So if the event went past 10:00 PM, you know, the suspension would go past 10:00 PM. I think in this case, the event was 10:00 PM.
We actually did go to 10:15 last year.
Ah ha, the truth be known.
I know.
I'm not concerned about...
Figure the chief would get me on that.
10's not a bad thing. 10:15's, I'm concerned I have is you start going into the quote-unquote "we hours," and everyone defines "we hours" differently. But if the tentative outline says 10, I'm okay with that. We have dealt with, and I know Dana and Jeannie have served on subcommittees on behalf of the council, dealing with sound, noise, invasions, if you will, in the neighborhoods and the downtown. And I just don't want to see us start pushing it to 10:15, 10:30, 11:00, and all of a sudden the concerns of the neighborhood become seemingly justified. I'm comfortable in saying 10. I haven't got a problem with that. Little over, I'm still okay. But you start going much later, regardless of a weekend position or otherwise, I have concerns about late noise. And I want to make sure that the police department has a clear direction from us and an understanding from you that this is not going to the "we hours." If it was 10 o'clock last year, I didn't get calls in opposition to, from a noise standpoint. In fact, I got very few calls that were in any way even concerned about the issue. They were all very positive. And for a first time out of the box, short notice, you all did a yeoman's job getting us something that was positive for Palm Springs and with possible growth with some pretty big names.
You know, and if I may add one thing, I just came back from Germany last year and, Mr. Oden, in context with what you're saying about promoting Palm Springs, I met with a German radio station and a German tour operator that are really into rock and roll. And if this is approved tonight, I'm supposed to email them tomorrow and they will put together a radio promotion promoting Palm Springs. They have a 50's rock and roll group there in Berlin called The Petticoats. The tour operator will put together a group tour promoting Palm Springs and they won't just be coming in for Rocktoberfest, they'll be coming in for about 10 days. So everything that we do has the focus of promoting the city, putting heads in beds, people in our restaurants and into our stores. So, you know, we have, you know, some really exciting opportunities to expand this even further than what we thought we might have been able to do.
Well, I'm, I support this issue. Again, if the times are representative of what you've got, please be cognizant of my concerns there. If they do go beyond it, I would like to have some sort of report back that they're changing those. But 10 o'clock is not a concern for this gentleman. I'm okay with that. Any other concerns the council wants to record? Otherwise, what's the council's pleasure?
Move the resolution.
Second.
Motion for approval of Mr. Mills and second by Ms. Rela Spurgeon. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, kid.
Let's rock and roll. Thank y'all so much.
Let's rock and roll, as they say. Thank you, Linda. I appreciate all your efforts. Mr. Reddy, do we have any additional legislative items, sir?
There are none.
Thank you. Are the added starters?
There are none.
Under reports or requests, council reports or requests?
Yes.
Mr. Oden.
I have a question or request for information. Let me see, what is it? Okay. What is the process or procedure for the installation of parking restriction signs?
I don't think you need to report that. I see you asking for it so I can come forward, either in a staff report or if you wanted a study session, do you just want to report back?
I'd just like an answer, however you want to bring it back.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Other questions or reports or requests? Thank you. Under item 12 is the treasurer's investment report. Council, any comments? Otherwise, just receive and file. 13 is your general plan update outline. Are there any questions? Any report from staff side on that? Otherwise, we'll just continue in that path. Appreciate the update. Item 14 is the council appointment of subcommittees, 10 for budget task force, appointment of chair, designation of meeting place, and televising of meetings. First, I'll report back on the issue of Mayor Marinoff's ability to serve. I had contacted Lloyd last week. He indicated to me that his personal calendar has a number of demands upon it. Family functions, graduations, and so on and so forth, and vacations that are planned. And although he would be willing and honored to serve, that he states based on his calendar demands, he is not willing, because of the uncomfort, he doesn't want to slow the process down, to commit and then not be able to attend the meetings. So he's asking to be stepped down from a chair's post and he would serve at whatever capacity he could when his time's allowed. So he is, he appreciates the council's confidence in his work, which we all unanimously supported, but he will not be able to serve at this time. The pressure being that if, in fact, the results are demanded upon the task force by this year's budget, that he could not commit to that much time in that shorter period of time.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
Inasmuch as Mr. Stiles is the person who brought this before us, is there any opposition to him chairing it? From the EDC?
He's the president of EDC, is that right? I would take that under consideration.
Then I would make that recommendation.
All right. Well, maybe we'll fold that into a full motion at the end. Each of you had the assignment of finding two members, and I hope you've contacted those members to find out whether they would accept the nod if given. I've called my two people and said that yes, they would accept the nod. So I, I think we'll start with Dana and see what we've got.
I did contact my two people, one is Sharon Locke and Howard Lapham, and both said yes.
Jeannie?
I didn't contact two people. I only contacted one because I thought we were going to take the second one from the EDC list.
Okay.
Al Reichel, and he said yes.
That's your member at large?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mills?
I contacted a member of EDC who was not on the list, which was Mr. Steve Nichols, and he was, was interested. And at large, I contacted Mr. Paul Mattson, who was chairman of the last...
Yes, he was.
...blue ribbon budget task force. And Paul was also interested with the caveat of after 4:15, so...
Mr. Oden.
Yes. From the community, I'd like to nominate Jenny Fout, F-O-A-T. And from the EDC, Truman Gates.
Good.
Is Truman's name on the list?
No.
It was added.
Oh, I see.
And that...
Where? We had a separate letter.
Yes.
You have different lists?
I don't have that.
No, there was a separate letter that came through. It was in the packet last Friday.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I didn't get that.
Okay.
You forgot to call you.
You make one announcement. You know what I'm saying? You hold one press conference.
You don't get dinner? I mean...
All right. Here's my recommendations. I've contacted both of these. I went heavily into the accounting world from EDC. I asked Mike McCullough, and he said he would serve it. And at large, because of her work on so many fronts, including the most recent campaign, I asked the accountant Lynn Bishur to serve. And inasmuch as I'm heavy on accountants, they, of course, would appreciate much that Paul has, the issue of the April 15th, but they still would be willing to start their work, obviously realizing that after the filing period, they could devote much more time. Okay? Now, Jeannie, we just need you to look at an EDC list, whatever list you have.
I want it.
If you want to show it, if you want to make a recommendation.
Tom Moho.
Tom Moho?
Yes.
Very good. Okay. And is it still the pleasure of the council to allow John Stiles to serve as chair?
It's fine.
It's fine, yeah.
All right. Let me see if I can read these back to make sure the city clerk has these. And please confirm this. If there's a change, let me know. Dana, you have at large Sharon Locke, EDC Howard Lapham.
Correct.
Jeannie, for your at large is Al Reichel, and your EDC is Tom Moho. Mr. Mills, your at large is Paul Mattson, and your EDC is Steve Nichols, right? Mr. Oden, it is at large Jeannie Fout.
Fout.
Fout, thank you. And EDC Truman Gates. And I am placing at large Lynn Bishur and at EDC Mike McCullough. It is the council's direction to appoint John Stiles as chair, and that will complete the 11 members. Do I have concurrence?
Yes.
I'll ask for a motion to that effect.
So move?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Rela Spurgeon and again second by Mr. Oden. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. I would like it if, in fact, this committee now moves into the hands of the staff.
Yes.
We have no role and no obligations, no responsibilities. Mr. Reddy, if you would contact the chair and perhaps even each of the members that are listed here, and if you don't have phone numbers, then contact each of us who made the selections and will give you respectively those phone numbers. And then try to start this process. And I know that Mr. Canar has the difficult task of assisting us in our budget, but it'll also be lead staff, I'm assuming, lead staff on the finance side of the presentation for the task force. It'll be a lot of work. Madam Clerk, questions?
Yes. In addition, that the, this is a council-appointed committee, they will be subject to the Brown Act. So just a reminder that they'll need to be posting agendas, taking minutes. And the council had also advised that you might like the possibility that the meetings are televised. And so you may want to include that in your direction to the city manager, that the chair can consider meeting here at City Hall in order for them to be televised.
Yeah, I think the council would accept that. I know in the study session, we discussed having it televised, and John was in the audience and indicated he had no problem with that. So it would be agendized, it is Brown Act, and it would be, in fact, televised. And they are open to the public. So anyone wishing to come down would go through that process to engage and so on. I think that's the council's convention.
If I may, I, Mr. Mayor? I am going, if it's sorry with the council, I am going to invite the members, leadership of the bargaining units to come to these meetings. And actually, it, the question is if they're just observers or participants, I think it'd probably be best if they were participants.
I don't think that's a good idea.
I don't think it's a good idea.
As participants, they're certainly more than welcome to be in the audience. But I think that was the whole point in setting up what we just did, is to have these as our participants.
Okay. Then I'll ask them as observers.
Not employees.
Observers.
Okay.
And if they would be able and eligible, under your authority, to participate when requested for presentation purposes, for clarification purposes, to assist the task force in their investigations and determinations. They will be making recommendations to us. Does the council have any milestones that you want information back from them? Or do you want them to help set up some milestones? Obviously, we've got a budget coming up. We'd like some input towards that. And then an ongoing process of furthering in the assistance of our budget and the education, which is an important component of this. They will let them bring milestones back to us after their first meeting?
I'm certainly interested in their recommendations. I think their greatest advantage will be to, to us will be for the budget process. So the sooner they can get to work, the better. And I think whatever recommendations they make, those recommendations can be ongoing if they choose to, no, I don't think they want to choose to maintain. I think we should set a timeline, or that they should, of when they will complete this task and get back to us with recommendations. Otherwise, it becomes protracted and it just becomes complicated.
The last task force lasted nine months? Nine months. We had a full, pretty exhaustive report on issues and concerns, but I think the initial concern we have is assistance in guiding and directing us on their advice for the budget and helping in the education process. I would like to suggest, and the council can give concurrence if they so desire, we have a calendar that we're using for our budget cycle, and I would suggest that that be revised and allow us to see how the finance task force is weaved in there so that we understand what they're doing and if we want to give them directions for their next meeting or otherwise. They're going to see our schedule, what you're all working on, they should be aware of that and they should be somehow entered into that timeline. Okay? Anything else on this subcommittee?
Yes. I think we, as a council, have a track record of establishing committees and reports, and we don't follow a theme that they recommend to us. We had two reports that made specific recommendations. We had the recommendations from this committee. I'm just concerned that we prepare ourselves, that if they make recommendations to us, that we look very seriously at them and that we don't waste people's time, that we're going to follow the recommendation. I know it's advisory and we don't have to, but I think it's real important if we're going to do this, that the people who are donating their time, they know that we're taking this very seriously.
Very good. Anything else on that? Public reports or requests? Oh, no, we've got to deal with item 15, I'm sorry, the council cabinet schedule. My calendar showed an April 9th date. Is that not confirmed?
No, you moved that. You're going to have that meeting on April 9th, and so you, Mr. Oden, you weren't at that last study session.
I know, but I responded to the email from Martha regarding those dates. And whatever those dates were, I confirmed them. But I don't remember exactly what those dates were now.
But you're confirmed.
But I'm confirmed. I'm there.
What meeting did we put on the 9th? Because we were talking about putting the council cabinet on another night, always, you know, possibly in the future.
You always move it off calendar. It's not going to be a Wednesday night meeting anymore.
Right. We were talking about doing that.
Yeah, the skate park and whatever date was for the council cabinet, which sounds like the...
The 10th would be the council cabinet, then.
I'm sorry?
The 10th would be the council cabinet.
10th, okay.
No, the 10th, we talked about this, the 10th can't be the council cabinet. Mr. Mills and I have an evening plan.
The 8th would be council cabinet.
The 8th?
The 8th.
Would be a Tuesday night?
Oh, we, oh, we didn't know because of runs.
Yeah, we didn't.
And I said that date was...
That's okay.
What is the date then?
So the 8th is okay.
What date is it, please?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, April 8th is okay with the council for the council cabinet meeting?
I guess so.
Okay, then I'll notify the chairs. Thank you. Yes, 7:00.
All right. So April 8th is it. Now, based on Dana's comment, should we try to give direction at this time to move it so that it is always off calendar, so it does not conflict with Wednesdays any longer? And then can you somehow define what that Tuesday would be? Is it the Tuesday before the second Wednesday? I mean, how do you want to define that? Because I don't want to keep on moving, we've moved council cabinet so long just for the sake of them planning their lives and their calendars. And I don't want the task every quarter to go to the city clerk to call everybody to say, "We're going to move the date." Do you want to just move it off? If we're going to use Wednesday nights for council, fine. Let's find that Tuesday, if it's the Tuesday and what date it is.
For me, I cannot do a Tuesday every time because my classes rotate. So at some points, I'll have to teach on Tuesdays. And I have some council responsibilities that happen on Thursdays.
Maybe it's more important that Mr. Oden work his calendar with the clerk to find out what dates can be recommended, if you will, quarterly for the remainder of the year. Ours are pretty more flexible, at least mine is. Tuesdays and Thursdays aren't that big a deal unless something big comes up. But for the most part, if we can find out, if you know your calendar, we'll obviously work with you, Mr. Oden, to make it, okay? But for now, it is the 8th, correct? Okay. Anything else on the council cabinet schedule for April? We'll go to the 8th. Public reports or requests? Staff reports or requests? Item 16, emergency services coordinator briefing on valley-wide earthquake exercises.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, thank you. Today, as you know, we did have a valley-wide earthquake exercise, and as part of that, as city manager, I convened the EOC Emergency Operations Center at City Hall. And as part of that operation, part of my function would be to, along with the city clerk, to convene and make sure the city council is brought into session so you could ratify the measures of the EOC and the things that have to be done. And that's part of our role. And this evening, Blake Getz and... would be in the event of an actual earthquake or disaster, man-made or natural, and what the city council's role would be. With that, I'll give you, Blake, thank you.
I would suggest I should not be taken personally. Although it is a point of personal privilege, it's not a personal affront to use or the work you do. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Today, City of Palm Springs participated in a Coachella Valley-wide earthquake exercise based on a scenario of a 7.4 magnitude earthquake, a worst-case scenario, with lots of damage and injuries. And it was an operational exercise for us in the field. Police, firefighters, the airport had their full-scale exercise that's required by FAA every three years today, and we did that between the hours of 10:00 and 12:00. It was very active at the grassroots, ground level, field level, engines were on the streets, helicopters were in the air, our aerial squadron flew, all in an effort to practice the response plans for an earthquake or any emergency of that type of magnitude. The planning for this exercise has been about two months in the making, six weeks with every single department being represented in developing the exercise plan, which I presented for your study. Was very pleased with the involvement of all city personnel in this exercise. In the planning scenario, city staff decided that, you know, we do this a lot at the departmental level in practicing and rehearsing, but we never take it all the way. All the way being all the way to city council. And you are an active participant in your role as government officials in a disaster situation in the City of Palm Springs, and we thought that we would provide you the opportunity to experience what it's like to make decisions after an earthquake. So what's happened today is a field response happened this morning between the hours of 10:00 and 12:00, valley-wide. Our city EOC was activated and sending messages via fax, telephone, satellite phone to the Indio EOC, which is collecting data from all cities and jurisdictions and school districts throughout the valley. They then look at that data to get a snapshot picture of how bad the valley is damaged from an earthquake, and begin to develop priorities in identifying resource requests from individual cities. We then internally, to manage our incident within our city, our city manager, who is the director of emergency services per ordinance 2.20, convened the disaster council today at 2:00. The disaster council is his section chiefs and department heads involved in the exercise to receive a briefing, talk to each other about the scenario and the events that took place, and make decisions on when needs to happen for the following operational period. That did transpire today at 2:00. The city manager simulated declaring a state of local emergency because we, our resources were not enough to sustain ourselves, and we needed additional support from outside agencies, including the State of California and potentially the federal government. In order to get those resources, we do need to go through the process of declaring a state of emergency within the city. City ordinance requires that the city manager can do that. He's the only person in the city where his designee, second in chain of command, can do it, but the council must ratify that action within 72 hours following a major disaster. So we thought we'd take the opportunity tonight to have you ratify the action that happened earlier today in the declaration of a local emergency for a widespread earthquake that happened, simulated here in the valley today. And I would turn that over to you for any questions or discussions, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Very good. Thank you, Blake. Counsel, just a little follow-up. As I indicated in my earlier comments, I had that tour group here with the young students, and we went through this. I was actually engaged five, six years ago in a sort of a mock drill, as an elected official, as the spokesperson, whatever role I was assigned to at that time. I've not participated in prior years, so it's been a while. And even though it's a mock drill, I have to indicate to you that everyone there took it seriously. It wasn't like they're just kind of waiting to kill the time, and they're glad to be out of their office for the day. They were going through the drill. What can I do for you? What's going on? Give me a report on it. Phones were going, faxes were going, there were lines hung from the ceiling, the new phone lines, everyone was all set up. They were going through it as if this city was in a dire emergency with major, massive damage, injury, and catastrophe. A little-known fact, I don't know how you, I don't know if the information you have is quartered or confidential, but there's a system you use for schools that indicates if there's a flyover, there is a method by which the schools lay out a signal. Can you explain that?
It's like a red light, green light type of event. Schools have tarps, every school site in the Coachella Valley, all three school districts, every school has yellow tarp, or green tarps and red tarps. And what they do is they lay those tarps out in the parking lot, or ideally on the roof of the building, to identify to the flyover, because we do have paths that we fly over, sheriffs, helicopter, and our Palm Springs aerial squadron does it, to identify the school sites and which schools on an immediate flyover after event need assistance or are okay. And the school would put out the green tarp out in their parking lot if they're okay, and the red tarp if they need assistance. That information is immediately relayed down to the EOCs, where we then can respond out to the schools.
The normal day-to-day went on today, but you'd see Blake was here, both chiefs were here, Barry and Gary Jeannin were going back and down the hallway. I mean, they were actively doing that which they had to do in the event of, along with, I'm sure, the day-to-day tasks, but they were actively working on this thing. And it gave me some great sense of reassurance, because if it comes, it isn't as though they're going to wonder what to do, it's what we did the last time in the mock drill. And you listed probably two dozen areas highlighted geographically on a map, and logged it, and what's happened, and how many injuries, and how to take care of it, and who's going, and what resources. So it was very impressive, as always, very impressive.
Thank you. It's important in this day and age that city government practice these type of drills so that we are prepared to be on as finest response and recovery as we can be, that our citizens expect of public safety and government in general, especially in this day and age since post-911. We take our responsibilities seriously, and it isn't just police and fire doing this. It's everybody from human resources department to the street workers, to clerical staff within the building, the city clerk's office. The list goes on and on. We had every department in this city involved in this exercise for the last six weeks, and it all came together today, and you should be real proud of your city and the way it can respond to an event. So with that, I'd like to have you make a motion to accept the city manager's ratification of local emergency, so we can get the dollars rolling in for recovery.
So, Mr. Mayor, by your leave, that would be a resolution of the city council of the City of Palm Springs declaring March 19, 2003, as a local disaster as defined by the Palm Springs Municipal Code and hereby enacting emergency procedures thereof.
So moved.
Second.
Motion for approval on Ms. Hodges and second by Ms. Rella Spurgeon. Any further comments, questions? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone impressed with Blake's work?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, baby. Should have seen the eyes of the kids when he was telling what was going on. And then when they saw the chart and it said, "Cielo Vista School, buildings damaged." Now, it's only a mock drill, your school's fine, you'll be fine, you'll be safe. But it became real for him. You know, it became real. It was great. All right. Mr. Reddy, anything else, sir?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hodges?
May I jump back to council requests?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
And it was sparked by the last presentation. Over the weekend, primarily, I believe it was Friday and Saturday night, I don't know what was going on over at the hospital, but both nights between 12:00 and about 1:30, I was awakened by the helicopters. And, I mean, it was like they were hovering over my house. And I don't know if we were having a drill that night, those two nights, or what was going on. I know it's a trauma center, and I'm sure that had something to do with it, although I read nothing about anything traumatized in the paper. I'm just wondering if we could just double-check that, the paths that they're taking and the frequency that they're taking, because it was really very excessive.
Maybe we can report as to what happened. It was a major traffic accident, just bringing a lot of people in, or, but if we can. I know from my house, where I sit, it's almost like white noise. We don't hear it anymore. It's there, but we don't hear it.
Generally, I don't either, but this time, I mean, this actually
It was off-pattern.
I mean, they were like hovering over my house, both nights. And I thought, gee, is this a drill or something that we're having? Because normally, I don't pay that much attention to it either, you know?
Was there a big E on the side of it, entertainment
I didn't get up and look.